...get into the level of significance of issues. And for us, we assess the level of significance of issues. We look at detailed models that address when you have... The more ways, the more backup ways you have of accomplishing a safety function, the less significant it's going to be for an individual component failure. And the longer that component is failing, it's going to be more significant of the issue. And that's a very simplified description of kind of the drivers, if you will, of a process that we take senior inspectors who've been at the NRC for 20 years and put them through an 18 to 24-month qualification program to run those models. But that's kind of in a nutshell how we assess significance of issues. The criteria for column five address multiple escalated violations, multiple safety significant examples of failure to operate within the design basis, or a pattern of failure to address previous significant concerns to prevent recurrence. The inputs that have gotten over here have been low to moderate significance over a period of time. And those are a deviation from industry norms of performance. They weren't the kind of looking we've been doing to understand why they got there. And it's not a surprise at this stage of the process to have some safety culture issues because that is kind of is what lets that performance slide. But the inputs that I have from Don and his team do not have issues of that significance at this point that would meet those criteria. So there is a process for that, and that's what we're aiming against.
Could I ask a quick, just a quick technical question? Do you consider the design and the building of that plant to be a fail-safe design? In other words, and I don't know if you use that technology with nuclear power. We use it in aviation such that any failure could not cause a catastrophic failure. It would have to be a cascading... Is that plant fail-safe designed? And how do you know actually it's fail-safe designed?
So there, what we talk about is a single failure-proof design. Similar concept. And so that, it goes into the design of our regulations and goes into then the review of the design of the facility back 40 years ago, as well as consideration of any amendments to the license over time. So, you know, we talk about the diesel here. The normal power supply is the off-site power. They have the two emergency diesel generators which would provide electrical power in the event that the off-site power is lost. If they lose all of those, they have what's called a station blackout diesel, which addresses another rule the commission put in place in the 80s. Following Fukushima, they now have a trailer-mounted diesel that is backup if all of those fail. And but that then has, there are industry resources to deliver additional backup to the site within 24 hours of any kind of event. I mean, that includes where there might be debris from a natural event. They have contracts to get it there by heavy-duty helicopter if needed. So all of those backups would then be an input to how significant an individual diesel failure is. So that's kind of how we look at it. There is a single failure-proof design criteria in the commission's regulations.
Thank you. Before we proceed with the next speaker, I just want to let you know we are going to extend the time until 9:30 tonight because we have several speakers left. So the next speaker would be number 47, Diane Turco.
I'll take me out, Diane's right. Good evening. My name is Don Barton from Bakersfield. I just have a short statement I want to make. The NRC Regional Inspector, Don Jackson, got it right the first time in his leaked email. His words and observations cannot credibly ever be walked back. The leaked email was the genuine, measured truth, a damaging and fatal blow to the illusion that Pilgrim is safely operated and not in actual failure. Or else, ladies and gentlemen, we have all entered the twilight zone where facts and reality are contrived. I believe the NRC's credibility is at an all-time low in Massachusetts and the region. For the NRC, you continue to throw up pilgrims and energy. The worst tag team in the history of your organization is a grievous error. Pilgrim's clerical safety record shows a sustained and persistent decline. Even your recent security inspection had nine violations, 18 times the average level recorded at other plants. Now we find the spent fuel pool really is spent with 875 compromised ore-flux shields. From every perspective, in Jackson's own ambitions, Pilgrim is a failed plant. Know this: if the NRC gives Pilgrim another lifeline pass and there's another nameless, another accident, or a nuclear release in the future, surely the political leadership of the NRC would face the harshest legal consequences for gross negligence and dereliction of duty. The NRC will also face an onslaught of recrimination. Politicians will charge, will charge full-throated betrayal. You can be sure that your own scene inspectors have already prepared their CYA memos and stored them away in a safe place. Close Pilgrim down.
Thank you. Our next speaker is number 68, Tanya Perry.
Tanya had her lead, so she gave me her number. Made for short people. My name is Elaine Dickinson and I'm a member of Cape Town Windows. And thank you for being here. It's not easy in shoreside where you don't consider. And we do appreciate the chance to speak to you. We must talk about the candid and honest remarks in the email. Failure to follow established industry procedures? Broken equipment never fixed? The NRC's goal to arrest declining performance is not happening at all? The plant seems overwhelmed just trying to run the station? Failure of some staff to understand their roles and responsibilities? And references to the questionable safety culture at this plant? My question to you is why you, the nuclear regulatory mission, is protecting this corporation's profit by allowing it to continue to operate when public safety is at such risk? Your mandate to provide public confidence that you will do your job and keep the public and environment safe? That's your mandate? Does it really take a nuclear accident to get you to shut us down? A win-win would be to shut it down? Promote the confidence you're supposed to? Let Energy save the money to approve their remaining failing plants? And most of all, prevent a disaster that would kill the nuclear industry in this country faster than anything else and kill the lives that we all know and love here? Please, wouldn't you at least make Pilgrim comply before they refuel?
That was a question I'd like you to answer, please.
So, there was a comment earlier about the level of experience here. The experience on that team was over 500 years of inter-safety experience. We had almost a dozen senior reactor, senior resident inspectors from other stations, people who do live at, not only live in the communities of nuclear power plants, but their professional position is at a nuclear power plant. We have several of those people here who work at Pilgrim and live in this community. They are, our combined expertise and experience and in number of us and everybody else at this table who have gone to sea and lived within under feet of a nuclear power plant, operating a nuclear reactor. I've gone to see, not only on a Navy nuclear power ship, I've gone to see on a 30-year-old oil tanker. And I know the difference between non-nuclear safety standards and nuclear safety standards. And I've been in commercial nuclear power plants and I've been in commercial fossil power plants. And there's a difference that you see when you walk in the door. The team at Pilgrim walked in the door and they said, "This is not at the level of excellence that we would see at a normal nuclear power plant." But we also see, we looked, they looked at the availability and reliability of equipment. They've looked at the operators' responses in the simulators. They've looked at the things that are key to ensuring that an accident doesn't occur. And that, their 500 years of experience is telling me that that plant is safe. And what I'm hearing them describe, with my experience, is telling me it's safe. And that's what I'm relying on to make that judgment. And it's a judgment that is not, not without an interest in this community. I mentioned earlier to one comment that I grew up in Hingham. I've had family in this area for literally centuries. I have family all over this region. I have family who live in Plymouth. My parents live on Cape Cod. I own property on Cape Cod. So all of that, combined with my experience and the experience of this team, is all factoring into my judgment, combined with the programs that I'm trying to implement here. So that's my answer to your question. Those are the things that are going into my judgment.
With all due respect, I have a pre-decided time each to make a safety or have a full report out there.
This whole meeting is pre-decided?
That is my comment based on the information I have today.
You should put a public comment into your report in terms of whether they should allow you to operate.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, what she said was we should put the public comment into the report.
Yeah, yeah.
The next speaker will be number 16, Karen Vale.
Hi, I'm Adrian. I'm the executive director of APCC. Karen has ceded her time to me. Thank you very much. APCC is 5,000 paint motors who are interested in the environment. And in 2014, we did an analysis of Pilgrim's impact on the environment today. And what we found was a functional oxalcent plant that was poorly designed and poorly maintained. And nothing since 2014 changes our mind except more concerns in terms of that. The policy in the NRC appears to be peak and shriek. You give us a peek at what's going on at Pilgrim and we shriek and then you walk away. And that's not good public policy. We deserve more. One of the things that we deserve is full disclosure. The email wasn't believed, it was disclosed. And what it disclosed was a lot of problems, particularly with a culture of safety, of safety culture at the plant. So my first question for you is, are you going to release all of the information related to the safety inspection, including all of the preliminary emails, not just the first one in terms of what went on? And will you continue to make all of the information fully available, including drafts going on? My second question goes to some experience that I had in naval aviation where they went through a culture change in safety and the development of NACOPS. And that took, one key ingredient was support from the very top echelons of leadership in the military. And my first, my second question is, who at Energy is leading the change to change the culture at Pilgrim from Entergy? My third question is, who at the NRC is going to oversee that change in safety culture that you've already identified as being necessary at the plant? And finally, I'd like to know who has experience at the NRC over culture changes and safety? One of the things that the Navy learned was that they had highly motivated, highly trained people who were crashing airplanes and that they had to figure out why that was happening. And we've got great people at Pilgrim. I don't think anyone in this room would dispute that. But how are you going to change the culture of how the engineers talk to the operators, which is one of the things that you identified tonight as being problematic? That is not an easy step. We've heard that you're talking about years to accomplish that in a plant that has only a few years left. Thank you.
I'm going to take a whack at a couple of those and then turn it over to Dan. I'm going to answer, I think, the first one and the fourth one. Are you going to release all emails? And then the safety culture piece, how is that going to get released to the public? So I will tell you that the email that I sent that was released was kind of a roll-up email. So it's, if you read that email, it really didn't delete anything on the first two or three updates. So the first update, first day you get there, it's kind of small. Second day was a little longer, third day was a little longer. And if you notice in the email, I wrote "update" or "the same," right? So what I tried to do was update and stay the same. And it got discombobulated the night of the email I sent out because I was tired and missed some of the updating. But if you have the email, it encapsulates the other thoughts that I had building up to that email. After the email was released and I received an email from Mr. Lockmore, I didn't write any more update emails. So there are no other update emails to provide because that practice ended with that release of the email. And then the report, the report itself that comes out, again, I haven't put anything together this big before, big before, but the Arkansas Nuclear One 95-003 report was in the vicinity of 350 pages. I mean, I'm not in the business to cut stuff out, so we're going to try to compile and get the information. It's not going to be filtered, is that's what I'm trying to say. And we have safety culture professionals at headquarters. I kind of know what safety culture feels like because I've lived in nuclear stations and in the Navy, so I kind of know what it is when I see it. And I can list you the elements of a good safety culture, but I'm not the person that can go out and ask people questions and get that information from people. We have specialists at the agency that actually are not technicians. They are not technical people that were on that part of the team. Actually, there's one person. One person is a senior resident inspector of one of the power stations and is also trained to be a safety culture assessor, which was very convenient for me. But the majority of that team were folks that are not technicians, they're safety culture experts. So I don't know if that answered that part of the question or not. So who has experienced the safety culture? We have a cadre of people in the agency with some very extensive training and actual... The person that was the group lead on this team was also the group lead for Arkansas Nuclear One. And I did that on purpose so I could kind of be able to compare apples to apples, oranges to oranges, rather than just have somebody that didn't have an insight on the corporate culture of Entergy. Did I answer one and four? I can't... Who was the person that asked that? I think I got one and four, right?
I'm not sure if you actually answered the question, but...
Well, so the other two that I had are who at Energy is going to lead the change and who at NRC will oversee the change. So I think a couple of parts on the Entergy piece. Entergy got a new chief nuclear officer down in Jackson, Mississippi in 2016, and I think that he, from my interactions with him, I think he is dedicated to lifting the performance of their entire fleet. And that's clearly a significant leadership challenge for him. I think one of the things that I take from this team's work is a need for Entergy and Pilgrim in particular to engage other utilities, other licensees, that are demonstrating high performance and get out and see what that high performance looks like. They have brought in subject matter experts that are affecting change in the outcomes of processes and programs at Pilgrim. I think what the team has identified is that those behaviors are not completely internalized in the station staff. I think that there is an opportunity for Entergy to do more by getting other people who have experience demonstrating the high level of performance in the culture and implementation of processes to help them drive that change.
Did he formally work at the NRC?
I'm sorry?
Did he formally work at the NRC?
The chief nuclear officer?
Yeah.
No, he did not. And the other question was, who at the NRC will oversee the change? So when the licensee implements the actions to improve the safety culture, we will draw on the same group of, the same category of our staff who are trained and certified as nuclear safety culture assessors. The ones who've given you this assessment, they're going to assess whether that change is in fact being effective.
Hi, I've got it. Entergy just recently announced, closed, or sold over half of their nuclear fleet. There is no motive for them to improve the safety of those plants. How are you going to address that?
So if you didn't hear what he said, then make sure we get it for the close caption. The question is, Entergy has just, has either recently or just announced the closure of about half of their fleet. If you're not familiar with their fleet, that's Pilgrim, Indian Point in New York, and Palisades in Michigan have all have announced closure dates. And Fitzpatrick in upstate New York is in the process of, they're trying to sell that to Exelon Corporation. So what is their motivation to make the investment to keep it safe? We don't inspect to their motivation, we inspect to the safety outcomes. And we have had, over the last several years, experience with stations where there has been announcement of an intended closure, and then there's some period of continued operation until they do close. Vermont Yankee was one of those stations. That was an Entergy station. Our experience there was that there were several issues that came up during the final year and a half that that station operated, where Entergy took the appropriate actions to make repairs or modifications to the station to maintain the safety of that station. So I think there we saw some good behaviors during that period. Our inspection program will focus more on operations and maintenance activities to ensure that safety margins are maintained during the remainder of plant operation. We have implemented a similar program at Vermont Yankee. We have a similar program at Oyster Creek in New Jersey, which is also slated to retire in 2019. So that's how we will focus on it, and we recognize that there's the possibility that their motivations are to not make those investments. We will look to make sure that the investments that are needed are being made.
They've demonstrated this motivation for the past four years during the nosedive that we call four. You know, I mean, you can't ignore that that's not part of the formula for arresting or reversing their safety culture behavior. It's about money.
Can I say something to the rest of the panel?
We've got to get back. We'll get back when we speak your words.
We can get back to the speakers. Thank you. The next speaker is number 12, Joanna Kerrigan.
I'm going to speak with Joanne, Joanne Geary.
I already spoke before. We kind of messed us up.
So I'm going to just ask a simple question because I asked this before. Who has the power to close this plant? Is it you, is it the governor, is it the president? Who can say, "Close it, bam!"
The commission. The commission that we work for.
Okay, so with that said, my real concern is, when it's closed, we have all this spent fuel rods forever. Who's going to protect it? Who's going to keep us safe? I have, this is my life here. If something happens, even little something, I've got nothing.
So we will still be here. When the reactor ceases to operate, the NRC also regulates the storage of the spent fuel. We certify the design of the cask that we stored in, and we license the storage facility. So we will continue to be inspecting and ensuring the safety of that spent fuel as long as it's here, and as long as it's here gets into a whole other issue.
Where do you get the money to make sure this happens?
So the money for, you're asking, I think, where does the licensee have the resources to continue to do that when they're not making electricity, right? So the National Waste Policy Act established a legal expectation that the Department of Energy would start taking that fuel back in 1998. We know that wasn't met. Over time, the facilities that are continuing to store that material and are incurring expenses as a result of that have taken the federal government to court and have received funds out of the Nuclear Waste Fund to cover the expenses of maintaining that fuel on-site because the Department of Energy has not taken custody of it. So that appears to be what will continue to be the viable source of funding to ensure that it's maintained safely on-site until strategy is in place to remove it.
I'd like to just make a comment that you're also the agency that allows this waste to build up and build up and continually being produced, and there's no place for it to go. So that's part of your job that you've been doing.
The next speaker is number 73, Michael Muntika.
I'm not familiar with it, but I would like to see Richard Rothstein, Plymouth resident and long-term member, former member of the Plymouth Nuclear Affairs Committee, and should have been too, or retiring last year. Let me say, I know you folks know your stuff from a technical and regular store, regular place standpoint, you're very qualified. How do I know that? With all due respect, I think maybe when you were in elementary school or junior high school, I was working in architect engineering firms in the early 1900s, citing designing, licensing, first generation nuclear power plants. And we had an NRC at the time that made Bill Melchick look like a pussycat in terms of what I was going through in terms of the studies I had to do in terms of the WOTF studies, if there were accidents. I think one of the most challenging ones was a project up in Washington State where the Washington Power Supplies System Building Plant, Building a Plant from the Columbia River. There was a fast flux test facility three, five miles away and evaluating the likelihood and impact of a 3 million gallons of liquid sodium fire creating a sodium oxide plume traveling with the right weather conditions to go over to where the emergency diesel generators were, which might have to be activated because the emergency core cooling system had a failure during a lost coolant accident, and the spray pod since the ultimate heat sink had to kick in. And there was a design basis tornado also going through Washington State, also going right over the spray pod, taking out all the water. We needed those emergency generators. I understand what it's like to have to do these kinds of studies, and it's very challenging. And that's just a comment, but my question is, in this generation, in this timeframe, I've not very knowledgeable experience about the Action Matrix Program in terms of these aging plants and the comment about the more about the plants such as in New York State that have been planning on shutting down, but based on political decision, government decisions are being solved, are receiving a new life through economic funding, that if Pilgrim were not planning on shutting down in 2019 due to economic factors, how long would the NRC, this is a hypothetical question, but how long would the NRC allow a nuclear facility to be in a category four action matrix status there before doing anything different, whatever different might be? I don't know if there's a protocol for that, or if that's happened yet, or if you could just explain, Michael, the problem there, because I think the concern is that with Pilgrim shutting down in 2019, maybe you're getting off the hook, but at least that's the theme I hear from a lot of the contractors. I think my help would explain that.
Yes, I'll start that, and I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Don. We asked early on when I was putting this inspection team together, I mean, one of the logical questions was, do we do this inspection framed in on the fact that we think they're only going to operate until 2019? And we talked a lot about that. It would change the complexion of what we did during the inspection. The answer came back, no, and it was just for the reasons that you're saying. I can assure that they're going to stop operating in 2019. So we did it assuming future operations, and that's how we ran the inspection. Now with that, I think the bulkier question that Mr. Don can answer.
And I'm actually going to turn to Bill Dean to answer part of that from a programmatic perspective, because he is the program owner. But I just, to King of Adon's comment, I want to make it clear, I have no reason to believe that Entergy will change their mind and operate past 2019, but as we looked at this inspection, the license goes beyond 2019, so that's possible. So I wanted to make sure that we're getting the insights to turn the station performance around regardless of whether they close in 2019 or not. But I'll let Bill speak to the program aspect.
Yeah, so I appreciate the question, Mr. Rothstein. So as you look historically, and Dan mentioned earlier, that since the inception of the React Oversight Process in 1999, 2000, here are the number of plants that have entered Column Four. And the range of time that these plants have remained in Column Four post issuance of the 95-003 inspection, and as Dan and Don both pointed out, that 95-003 inspection report really is a key milestone in terms of developing, what is the additional oversight we're going to have over this licensee to assure that they extricate themselves from Column Four? I have looked historically, and we've had some plants that have within three quarters extricated themselves from Column Four, and we've had some plants that have gone 10 and 11 quarters before they emerge from Column Four. And I think where we saw the plants that had a longer time to go out of Column Four, they generally had issues that were of a more substantial technical area. In other words, that there were either major modification that had to be made to safety systems, or that there were issues associated with their understanding and maintenance of their licensing and design basis. That took a lot of effort to do analysis and engineering studies to assure the NRC that they had safe systems. So that's kind of the range that you would have. I would say that the issues at Pilgrim, where you compare them with the Column Four plants, are not as much in the safety system, design basis area, but they're more in process, but more in culture. And that's going to take a concerted effort on part of the licensee. And I know that in my discussions with senior Entergy management, actually several months ago, Dan and I and some of our peers went down to Jackson, Mississippi and met with Chief Nuclear Officer Chris Bachan, met with the CEO, Leo Denal, and every site VP from every plant in the NRC as well as members of their board. And I came away from that meeting with some degree of confidence that Mr. Bachan is going to try and turn around Entergy. And I'll give you just one example that demonstrates that. A plant in the South Grand Gulf had several operational issues, none that led to findings of significance from the NRC, by the way bothersome, from a safety culture issue. And Mr. Bachan ordered that plant to shut down and basically spent four or five months in a shutdown condition until they could address what they felt were operational program issues at that site, and they just recently started up. So to me, that demonstrates his commitment for the Entergy fleet to operate safely.
Okay, the next speaker will be number 67, Nancy Langford.
Hello, my name is Nancy Langford, and I thank you for the opportunity to make a comment. I have been a resident of Duxbury for 25 years. I currently serve on the Duxbury Nuclear Advisory Committee under the very able and inspiring leadership of Mary Langford and Rebecca Schin. Thanks to them. I have safety concerns about Pilgrim. I have been attending these meetings for years and have spoken with NRC staffers who have told me that they live near nuclear plants and they have no safety concerns. Well, I have safety concerns. I saw the email, and I appeal to you to listen to the many of us who have these concerns. And knowing the status of the national Pilgrim and Entergy, I wanted to ask you to acknowledge that our concerns are very real. Now, I know that you have a difficult job, so I'd like to present an analogy for you. Maybe other people can understand this. There's an older person in your family, and he shouldn't be driving. Maybe it's Grandpa, even though he just drives in town, and maybe it's church on Sunday. Or maybe it's Grandma, but just look at her car. It's covered with dents, she's hit the garage and the mailbox, and oh, those pesky roses she drives through all the time. Or maybe it's Uncle Joe, who drives a really old car that he loves, and you won't let your children ride with him anymore. Everybody knows that they should stop driving, but no one wants to have a fight and take the keys away. And if the family talks about what might be the underlying wish, oh, it's just, can we have a little accident? Then we can all agree to take the keys away and that now it's time to stop driving. We can't afford a little accident. Take the keys away now. The other thing we'll be able to do is, we won't be, our asking about safety concerns will be moving on to the bigger future issues. How do our communities deal with the closed plant that is a nuclear waste dump right on a seacoast? Duxbury continues to need emergency planning funds from Pilgrim, and we have no guarantees that they will continue to store. For these concerns, I ask that you take away the keys and close the plant.
My next speaker will be number nine, Joanne Graham.
Thank you so much for coming. I really appreciate your making a good effort to come here. I have several intentions, but one of my main intentions here is to really welcome this opportunity to make a new relationship with the NRC and the Commonwealth. This would be obviously a sort of historic moment worth sharing, where the NRC is actually coming forward. Thank you for that email. I don't call it an accident. The information of operating a radiological nuclear power plant is a safety issue, not just a safety issue, but it is an issue that we all reserve 100% disclosure about, 100%. And those of us who have been studying this are very aware that there's something that's been coined the nuclear priesthood, that the nuclear industry has been cloaked in secrecy from its conception. It was very successful in eliminating an entire generation. As you noticed in this room, the populace between 40 and 30, 20s are almost non-existent here because the NRC and working governments, however it just happened, have not been educated about what radiological nuclear proliferation actually is. We have had so many conics and boofs and all these things that wanted to make us put this in a row of some kind of action movie. Wait, cool, a nuclear explosion, a few people die, bummer. But that's not all there is to the story. So I'm really grateful that we are alive now, that we have survived this century of fear that has driven us to this point, that we have radiological disasters literally all over this planet. And now we have an opportunity to be human beings. You're human beings just like us. You love your kids, you love your dogs, right? So we really want to, I personally really want to be part of this bridge of communication, that this can be a starting point, that we can become aware of each other's voices and the need to address the nuclear priesthood and remove the secrecy that has been attached to this industry and address fully and responsibly with our intelligence the issues and the dangers presented in radiological nuclear proliferation from the nuclear power plant to the nuclear bomb, which are all connected. And I have one question. What is so important about adding more spent fuel to Pilgrim Nuclear Power Plant? Pilgrim Nuclear Power Plant has already offered 2,800-plus, 2,800-plus spent fuel rods that are sitting there waiting for the beloved almighty, NRC, to be responsible for, and you want us to give you more? Why? That's my question. Thank you.
It's an interesting framing. I would not characterize it that we want more. Our mission in our authorizing legislation is to ensure active protection of public health and safety. And it is through the commissions, regulations, and the licensing of the facilities and the oversight that we conduct, that we endeavor to meet that mission. And it is, those are the criteria that you use to evaluate when we have a plant with declining performance, whether it has reached a point that our mission calls us to shut it down. And I know a significant portion of the room here thinks we've gotten there and where we're at right now. But we hear you.
So we've reached the point at which we have one speaker left, and after that, we will be required to vacate the room. We'll have some closing remarks, but I do want to have our last speaker, number 64, Paula Sharaga.
Well, I am Sarah Thatcher, and I'm just going to be very quick. The enormity of losses, if there were any accidents, it's an enormous area and millions of people. But the thing about it is where I think it's so irresponsible with no certainty about where this spent fuel is going to go, very little certainty in terms of what it would be to get you guys to realize that the quality of our life worrying about, this is all over Cape Cod. Worrying about this reactor because we know about cancer rates, all of that has been talked about. But it is the uncertainty of where is all this radiation going? Nobody knows, and I don't believe you do. So, thank you.
I'll be fast, then the golden ticket.
Okay. Just hang on a second. I just want to follow one bit of the fight, straight? So you can think what you wanted about the recent election results, the NRC is a apolitical organization, but I want to tell you that the efforts, your laws in the Darker Mountain were impacted by political decision-making. And so there's certainly an opportunity here with a Republican Congress...